Action on the special meeting. And I'll do that. I'll give a brief overview and then we'll open it up to question and comment from the council members.
That sounds good. Go ahead.
And this is our first telephone conference meeting, so it's gonna be a little bit awkward, so just be patient with us. We can't see each other, so it's gonna be hard to know when someone wants to speak. So just sort of... Can you hear me? Yeah. Yes. Okay. So the purpose of this special meeting is to consider a small business emergency loan program in light of the coronavirus or COVID-19 health pandemic, which as you know, is not only a public health crisis, but it's also turned into an economic crisis with certain businesses being ordered to close for operation due to concerns about the spread of the virus, such as barber shops or beauty salons, non-essential businesses now. Other businesses are allowed to remain open, but they have to change their operations in order to try to mitigate the spread of the virus. And so with that, and now Gaston County is currently under a stay-at-home order and the whole state will as of five o'clock today. So the public is asked to stay home and to limit non-essential trips and non-essential business activities. So with that, a lot of our small businesses are having a tremendous loss of revenue. Some have already just shuttered and hopefully, hopefully they can reopen when this is all over. Of course, we don't know when this is gonna be over. Stay-at-home order for North Carolina runs through the month of April, so there's at least another month of reduced business activity. And a lot of the small businesses frankly just can't survive a month without normal revenue. So they have been able to apply for assistance from the federal government and the state government. And the federal government and the state government have said that they will speed these application processes. They will try to get the money to the small businesses as best they can, as quickly as they can, but we're gonna be overrun with applications. And I don't know that they've staffed up to handle what they're about to get. So last week, Councilman Seelinger sent me a blog post from the UNC School of Government on local government and municipal authority to loan money to small businesses in an emergency. And the initial blog looked at the process by which the school government official was laying out the program was cumbersome and time-consuming, and I don't know that it would have benefited our businesses because we could not have acted quickly enough. He, Councilman Seelinger, then sent me an updated blog post Thursday evening and Friday. Apparently, the school government had done some additional work and had said that we could use Chapter 166A from the general statutes, which is the Emergency Management Act, to act more quickly, as long as we then ratified the program through Chapter 158, which is the economic development chapter. So with that, I talked to Councilman Seelinger on Friday, that this is something that we could potentially do with council approval through a special meeting, and talked to the city attorney about it, and Phil Bogan, our downtown director, based on his experience in Louisiana after Hurricane Katrina. And this is something that I feel like we can't do and frankly, we should do. And so what I'm recommending is that the city council approve $400,000 to be used for emergency loans to small businesses located within the city of Belmont. So if your business is located within the corporate limits of the city of Belmont, you're eligible to apply for this loan. The loan would have a 7% interest rate, and that's important because that's above a market rate so that we're not competing with private lenders. And that does hedge a little bit against the risk because these would be unsecured loans. The loans would be up to $10,000 per small business. So we had 40 applicants, 40 businesses applying for $10,000. That would take up a full amount. Obviously, if businesses apply for less, then that's more money, or more businesses that could be served. But no business could get more than $10,000 on a loan. Because this is a crisis and a cash flow issue for businesses, the payments would be deferred for the first 12 months of the term, and the term would be three years or 36 months. So there'll be no payment need required for the first 12 months. Interest would accrue during that deferral period, but payments would not be required. And then if the crisis ends sooner and/or businesses can get additional financial assistance and they want to pay the loan back sooner, they certainly can, with no prepayment penalty. The city staff would oversee this program. I'd like to appoint a committee of three staff members to oversee it. And it would just take a simple majority vote, so two of the three members of that committee could approve a loan or deny a loan if they view it's not eligible or too much of a risk. Phil Bogan, our downtown director, as I mentioned earlier, has experience doing this in his capacity with the state of Louisiana after Hurricane Katrina. And he's come up with an application form that's very similar to what the Small Business Administration has created, so that we can get some credit information, some business information, the revenues, employees, expenses, rent, things like that, to make sure that as best we can, we can mitigate against these small businesses defaulting on the loan. Because we're using taxpayer money for this program, so we want to be careful about it. But we have to, as elected body, you need to weigh the risk of losing some money from this program versus losing a lot of small businesses in our town and having vacant downtown storefronts and downtown, I mean vacant storefronts and shopping centers on Wilkson Boulevard, Park Street, for example. So if this crisis continues and businesses can't wait until the Small Business Administration funding or state funding is available, then we're gonna lose a lot of jobs and a lot of businesses. So this $400,000 that I'm recommending that we use, it's money that you'll recall in last year's budget discussions was approved to go into our fund balance, which is our general fund savings account, or you know, our rainy day fund. So it was intended to go into the city's savings account to help the city, if the city had a financial crisis. But I would argue that our rainy day is here, and this money could be better used to help save some of our local businesses and keep local jobs than would be just to put it in the city's savings account at the end of the fiscal year. That's a very broad overview. I hope you've had a chance to read the proposal and the resolution that I sent out this morning that outlined this program. Mount Holly just approved a similar program this morning. They held a special meeting this morning and approved a similar program, a little bit less money overall, but more money going to their businesses. But I think they had fewer businesses downtown that would be eligible. Ours is not limited to downtown. It's for any businesses in the city limits. So we've put this together quickly, so it's, you know, all the details aren't ironed out, but we are working to make sure that we have a, you know, an application process that's easy to use for our businesses and not gonna have a lot of hurdles, so it would not have barriers for them to apply, but at the same time, does provide us with enough information so we feel like we can make an informed decision on which businesses would be eligible and would be, and not a terrible credit risk of losing money by loaning it to them.
The committee's gonna select these people.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Adrian, how do we...
How do you quantify a small business? I was looking at it, uses the term "small business," but within the statute of the school of government, do they describe that at all as what is a small business?
I believe that it's 50 employees or less.
Okay.
Adrian, how do we make sure everybody's notified who would be available to look at this?
So I've asked Jamie Campbell, our city clerk, to do a press release that we can send out.
Okay.
We'll put it on our website, our social media. Certainly, we have a pretty good email list of the businesses on Main Street and Catawba Street, but we have some on Wilkson, but not all. But we will do our best to make this. I don't want it to be, you know, it's first come, first served, and I don't want there to be, you know, the perception that this is just for downtown because we have the Main Street program for downtown, so we have probably a closer relationship with our downtown business owners than we do outside of downtown. But it's open to everybody, and we'll try to catch the wide net to get the word out.
Okay.
Adrian, I have a...
The Chambers might be a good resource, too.
Yes, I agree. The Chambers, good idea.
I had a couple of questions. You know, obviously, these loans are gonna be unsecured, which is more of a risk, but I think, under the circumstances, it's probably all right. You know, with, I feel like if we required collateral security, it might be prohibitive of people entering the program because I think most collateral that would be offered up would be subject to a higher priority lien anyway. So even if there was collateral, I'm not sure where our place in line would be. Are we going to work with a bank at all? I've read the School of Government blog posts that sort of formed the genesis of this, you know, and there are a couple of alternatives, and some, a bank was more involved than others. But is there gonna be any involvement from a bank, even as just an administrator?
So Councilman Heffron, that's one of the things that Councilman Seelinger and I discussed last week. Obviously, banks have more expertise than we do on lending and creditworthiness and all that. I think that, and I would love to work with the bank, and that's something we can look at, but I think given the timeliness of this, and I'm literally worried about people staying open through the week, through the next week. So going out and working with community banks would be great if we had time to do it. But I think that the staff that I would want to appoint has enough expertise to listen to this time.
All right. Thank you for that. How will the loans be serviced? So we're appointing this committee. Is this committee going to, you know, track the loans, collect the payments, send out any default notices, heaven forbid, and follow up on collections, all that stuff?
Yes, so we'll use city staff for that. So the committee itself will review the applications and determine who meets the requirements and who should be approved. And then, and of course, I will, they'll provide a report to me, which I'll then share with the city council. But then, we would, we'd use our finance department to help get the money to the businesses, and then we'd have a promissory, we'd have an application, design application form, a promissory note.
A promissory note, yep. Okay. Good.
With the grantee, then we would have, we would set up the process for collection.
Okay. Is there going to be an end date for this program?
Uh, when the money...
I mean, obviously, one way for it to end would be when the money runs out, but, you know, if we get 40 applications for $10,000, I mean, that would practically be an end.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the only, the only other thing, and I've mentioned this to you earlier today, I would just prefer, I mean, subject to input from other council members, since this funding is coming from money that was going to the general fund balance at such time as we receive payments, I would prefer, I at least would prefer that those payments be put in the fund balance so that we're, you know, it's an emergency, we need to act, I totally understand that, but at such time as the payments are made, I would sort of like them to go where they were supposed to go originally so that we're sort of back in as close a position as we would have been in but for this emergency. At least, that would be my preference.
Adrian, this is Councilman Turner, and I just wanted to add, I think, you know, what you said about the timeline, I understand what Councilman Heffron is saying about process with the banks, but in this instance, I mean, normally, I would agree with that, but if you go through a traditional lending process with a bank, it's gonna take a while to execute that, and I think if time is of the essence, then the approach you outlined is probably gonna work best. And I would add to that, I mean, these are unsecured loans, there's a chance that some of these folks will default, and I'm cognizant of that, and this, these are extraordinary times and requires extraordinary measures. So I think overall, I'm in agreement with the program.
I think one of the important things to do as well is get the right committee in place to be fair on these things that the people borrow the money, because it is a loan, and they have to pay it back. But if they pay it back before the 36 months, there's no prepayment penalty for paying the loan off early. And I think that's a good incentive right there if we get this thing unwrapped and are able to get out of this mess that we have right now. But it's a difficult time to do this, but we have to make a decision to help the people that really need to help.
And that goes back to Adrian's point about the 7% interest rate as well, because as I understand the program, we want to encourage people to either pay it off early or refinance at a lower interest rate with a bank when they're able to do so.
Yes. That's a good point.
Right, yeah, because the thought that I had was that, you know, they would kind of use this as a bridge to like an SBA loan or something more, I don't know, long-term, but it's gonna take a couple of weeks for, you know, the feds and the state government to do whatever it is they need to do to make that happen. So theoretically, they would roll over the loan before the interest even applies for our loan, but, you know, the interest rate is there to kind of serve as an incentive for that.
Yeah.
Well, the Lord knew why we had a rainy day fund and set that $400,000 in there because I don't think we ever anticipated anything like this. This is like, nothing I've ever seen before. And if we can help our small businesses, by God, I think we need to really look at doing that.
This is Ryan. Can you guys hear me? I was just taking it off of mute.
Yes.
Okay. So I'm more on the no side of this program, but I have about eight questions and then a few comments that could probably get me over to the yes side. Really, it's just kind of how I perceive it. And the way I perceive it is, this is kind of a junk bond portfolio that we're putting together, so it's real high-risk loans, because if these folks had a lot of credit, they would have it set up. So this is more for people who don't have a lot of credit set up, don't have quick access to cash, and that's more of a high-risk pool. And so I have some concerns around that. So I had a couple of questions on how we got here, and then also, just some general questions about if it works, and then some questions on things that I would like to see added to the application as well as the committee. And so have we looked at lending the money to the landlords versus the businesses? And these will all just be for you, Adrian.
No. So what we've looked at is based on the guidance from the school of government and how they suggested you set it, would be, this would be assisted directly going to the businesses.
Okay. And does every person have to pay the same rate, or can it be different based on their creditworthiness?
No, it would be, everybody would be the same $700.
Same rate. And do we have to approve $400,000, or could we start with $100,000 and then review our portfolio at that time to make a decision about releasing another $100,000?
No, $400,000 was a number we had budgeted that was gonna go to the fund balance, but you could certainly do less.
Okay. Have you guys looked at what the default rate would be to break even on this?
No.
Okay, so I just did some simple math here while you were talking, and if it's 7% interest on a $10,000 loan and it's deferred, so that's $700. So if one person defaults for every, probably 13 or 14 of these ones that we issue, that's our break even. So that's kind of the wiggle room there, because if you're at a bank and you lend out three of these and they all fail, you lose your job. We're in a different situation since none of us are bankers, but, so that's your break even. It's one out of 13, so that, we don't, there's not a whole lot of wiggle room there, because if you're wrong two out of 13 times, then you're starting to lose real money, and I know there's other benefits to it by keeping things in operation, but that's just something I think everybody needs to be very aware of. I think when we're looking at this, we need to make a real conscious decision, because if the payment's gonna be about $300 a month, if it's gonna be about $300 a month whenever they have to start paying it back, I think we need to go back and make sure that they would have been able to make that payment during the good times. And if you look at data in small towns or just small businesses, most businesses fail in the first five years. So my concern is that we're giving money to a new business that already wasn't gonna make it, and then this, this might perpetuate that going further. Not only that, I mean, you guys are all talking about this being a COVID-19 issue, but we're probably looking at going into a pretty nasty recession over the next few months. So even after this is over, a lot of these businesses might get closed just because of ordinary recession pressures that come in. As far, Mark had said this being kind of a bridge loan to the SBA gets approved, and I would like to view it that way, too. I'm just curious if anybody's looked in to see if you're allowed to use the SBA money or the disaster relief money, whoops, there you go, if you're even allowed to use the disaster relief money to pay back municipal entity, or if you have to show stubs that that goes straight to payroll. So I got that, and then, you wanna answer that one?
What I've looked at briefly from the SBA is that the money is used for payroll and operations, and if you continue to have a certain percentage of your employees employed after a certain amount of time, the loans are forgiven on the SBA side. I haven't seen anything that references municipal grants or, excuse me, municipal loans in terms of the SBA. But I agree with Councilman Seelinger, it's sort of a bridge loan, kind of a lifeline, until you get bigger assistance from the federal or state government.
But the question is, are you allowed to use that bigger assistance to pay off this Oftentimes, when you get government assistance, you can't use the money to pay off debt.
I think if you look at the last paragraph, the intent of the city is to review the applications in a timely manner and provide the funding to the business owners who are approved in as expeditious a manner as is possible. In other words, we look at their track record and see what we can do and put the trust in the committee to select the type, the right type of people to make these payments that can come up with the money to do that when it comes down time to it.
Adrian, this is Richard. Go ahead, Ryan, finish up.
I was just gonna say, my question was if you're allowed to use the disaster loan to pay off other debt, or if you have to use it only for like payroll and utilities and rent? Because if you're not allowed to use it, then it's not gonna be a bridge loan. Does anybody know the answer to that?
I do not know that answer, but I think I know.
Okay. Go ahead, Richard.
You know, Ryan raises a lot of good points. A lot of them, I think some of us have already thought about. The committee, Adrian, that you're gonna set up, they're gonna be making some big decisions. I mean, we have, Phil's gonna be on that committee, I don't know who else is gonna be on it, but selecting the members of that committee's gonna be critical, I mean, what they know about business, how to rate risks or grade them, is gonna be a pretty heavy burden because they are gonna be handing out loans from taxpayer dollars, so that's gonna be a critical element, is their judgment in this. Because, you know, Ryan pointed out, I mean, there's a lot of unknown factors here, I mean, but we're put in a position now to either act or not act. And if we act, we are assuming a lot of risk, but if we don't act, we're gonna assume a lot of risk, I think, with empty stores. So I mean, I think the team you put together is gonna be critical.
Absolutely.
Um, so if you want, here's some ideas on how I think we could reduce risk on this. I think if you started with a smaller pool of assets, like $100,000, then we could go in and look to see what our risk level is on that portfolio before we start reissuing more, essentially buying bonds from these people. The other thing is on the, on the small business loan, what they're offering is two and a half times monthly rent, utilities, and payroll. And I would, if this is gonna be in some sort of relation to that, I'd rather see us kind of have a maximum of two and a half times rent, payroll, and utilities up to a maximum of $10,000. That way, somebody who's running a real small business doesn't borrow more than, more than they should. And then, if you were to call in like randomly to a bank, you would need a credit score of about a 700 to get an unsecured $10,000 loan. You'd have to provide the first page of your personal financial statement, and then just some questions I'd put on the application might be, have you ever defaulted on a loan? Have you ever filed bankruptcy and asked for a letter of recommendation from both their CPA and their landlord on their ability to pay the loan? I think if you do that, that takes a lot of risk out of it, and then also just, I don't think we should be loaning it to only an LLC. I think the business owner should have the personal guarantee each loan as well.
Well, remember, if you do $100,000 divided by 40, you're looking at $2,500. That's all that is. That's not very much.
I'm not, I'm not doing that. What I'm doing is $100,000 for 10 businesses, up to $10,000, and then reviewing the program.
So limiting the number of businesses opposed to...
Okay. I'm just saying wait, yeah, I'm just saying wait until you get your first 10 applications and then release another $100,000. I'm not real comfortable in releasing $400,000 worth of cash into our downtown district during this epidemic and the, and the potential recession. So I'd rather us kind of release it. I mean, if people keep coming in, I guess right out of the gate, we'll see where they're at, and we can have this conversation in two days, but if everybody's restaurants or if everybody is one sort of element, I mean, we might find ourselves holding the bag when this whole thing falls apart.
Well, you know, Ryan, that's, I'm not in disagreement with what you're saying and is doing it in segments, because, I mean, that, this is gonna be a learning curve and a learning process for us and the board, so I mean, that might be a good approach.
Adrian, what do you suggest as city manager?
If we want to go smaller and mitigate our risk, we can certainly do that. And if we find out that nobody wants to take advantage of this program, then we know that we don't need to spend that much money on it. If we find that we're getting overwhelming interest from our small businesses, then, you know, I would suggest that if we wanted to start small and add to it later, then we would need to get, you know, we would need to do this conference call every few days to get new authorization. And of course, we have 48 hours notice requirements. We can meet again on Thursday if we find that there's a lot of interest between now and then.
Well, do we need to authorize you up to $400,000?
$400,000 is my recommendation, and y'all obviously don't have to take my recommendations, so if you want to change it, I'm open to anything. I want us to be in a position to help our small businesses.
And I do, too, Adrian.
Well, I mean, I'm not opposed to it, Adrian. I think, you know, Ryan makes some good points, but I mean, I would be curious, Jim, Mark, Martha, where are you guys on the $400,000, release the whole $400,000, or do you want to do it in steps, or... four hundred thousand, or do you wanna do it in steps, or?
I don't have as much problem with the four hundred thousand as what Ryan said about the stipulations, I think everything that you talked about adding, Ryan, are excellent, so I, I would like to have all those pieces of the puzzle before this committee makes the decision, that's my biggest concern.
Uh, yeah, I, I think I, I agree with Martha, um, uh, I, I think that a lot of what Ryan has suggested, uh, would help mitigate some of the, the risk we'd be taking on, um, I, I guess I'd be a little concerned about just kind of going too slow, uh, as far as like releasing it in pieces, uh, I, I think the one advantage of using the four hundred thousand of what was going to savings is that there's less, I guess, it, it's not really compromising financially for the city, since that was going into savings anyway, um, so I, I guess I'm, I don't know, it's, uh, I guess it's kind of a weird situation overall, but, um, it's, I, I'm, I'm okay with the four hundred thousand, I think with kind of the, some of the additional questions and, um, additions to the, the application that, that Ryan has suggested.
I agree with all, I'm sorry.
Yeah, these, these are emergency loans to locally owned, non-franchise businesses located within our corporate city limits, and those are the ones that are gonna be hurt the most, because they're not part of a chain or franchise.
I agree with what, um, what Ryan has said, uh, all the additional safeguards that, that he, uh, discussed, except the one place I think where I, I diverge a little bit, and I'm more in, in Mark and Martha's camp, is with the four hundred thousand dollars, uh, I, I'm in agreement with Mark, I mean, the, the re, you know, the four hundred dollar, four hundred thousand just didn't come out of thin air, it's what was otherwise going to go into the general fund, so like Mark said, you know, it's not something we're, we're taking out of that would, would, you know, go somewhere else in the budget but for, uh, this, so now we can't do some other program or something, this was going into the, uh, general fund, um, to be sort of saved for rainy day, and as, as Adrian said, it, it sort of is a rainy day, uh, if not this, then, then, then what? Um, you know, again, I would, I would like to see, um, since it's coming out of what was going into the fund balance, I'd like any, uh, payments that we receive to put there, uh, when they are received, um, but I, I agree about, you know, I, I'm less concerned about the four hundred thousand, and if the inclination is to start with a hundred thousand, like, all right, that's our only, that's our only marker, that's our only guidepost, if, if we start with a hundred thousand and we find that there's a lot of interest, then we open it up to the full four hundred, or we just go all four hundred, you know, up to four hundred, uh, from the beginning, but I don't see the need to keep recircling back and recircling back and, and, and opening up a little bit more, you know, either one, at most one guidepost, one, one, one gatekeeping function, uh, either zero or one, but I don't see the need to keep doing it every so, every couple of days.
I, I, I agree with you, Jim, I think that's a good point.
All right, I'm, all right, I think the four hundred thousand's fine with me. Um, all right, this is Ryan, um, I, I think I'm good with the four hundred thousand, I just, uh, if, if we can implement the additional risk metrics, I think that, that kind of spreads out the risk and takes, takes a lot of it off our cable, and I think everything that I mentioned's perfectly reasonable to ask somebody in a short-term period of time, uh, to, to produce, like your most recent tax return, doesn't have to be two thousand nineteen, it can be two thousand eighteen, right, so, um, all that kind of stuff, but I'm happy to email that out to everybody, if that's the way you guys wanna go.
I mean, I'm fine with the four hundred thousand, uh, I don't wanna, like Jim said, I don't wanna be every couple of days calling in to, to add to it, so, the one thing I don't wanna do, we're putting in safeguards, but there still is gonna be a lot of risk here, but I don't think you wanna make the loan application or process too prohibitive, I mean, we wanna safeguard it, but, I mean, this is meant for quick action.
And, and this is Adrian.
Go ahead, Martha.
I think all, it, all the stipulations that Ryan made, though, I don't think those would be a time problem, as far as what I'm thinking, because I would be able to come up with those fairly quickly if you're gonna offer me ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that stuff's all real easy to produce, yeah, yeah.
And this, this is Adrian, uh, so I think this is all good discussion, and, and we can certainly add those additional safeguards and those additional questions and, and information to the application process, and, uh, the cost chamber and the G G D C and the Gassen Chamber and our main street program have been pushing out information about the SBA programs, and so, from, from Phil's conversations with a lot of our business owners, they're already compiling this information, getting ready for these applications, um, so they should have this information, you know, readily available, um, and then, uh, to answer the earlier question about whether the SBA funding can pay off debt, uh, Phil said he, he found that that isn't eligible expense, so that, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay, okay, okay.
So we can certainly add these safeguards.
I think we need to move forward with it personally, it would help our businesses tremendously.
Councilman Seiger, were you, were you gonna say something?
Uh, yeah, I was just gonna add that I, I also like Jim's idea of kind of directing the payments back into the, the fund balance once we get them, I think that was, uh, a good point.
I agree.
I mean, if we build a good portfolio, it's, it's seven percent return on four hundred thousand dollars, so, um, it could be beneficial for the bottom line of the city.
Perhaps, but I think that's probably not our primary, um, focus, I mean, there, there is risk here, I understand that, but, um, you know, you don't wanna be full-hearted and reckless, but, you know, in, in this situation, I'm more inclined to, to take a chance and take a risk in order to do something to help our, our local businesses than, than, than not.
Yeah, Adrian, I don't have any, any problem with this program, I would ask you, are we approving this now, or are you going to put together the, the document, and then we'll take a look at that in advance of the council meeting coming up?
I'm asking you to approve it today, using the authorization under one sixty-six A, and we will, we will, we will hold a public hearing on it, um, basically reaffirming this process, this program through the economic development statute, but that requires a public hearing with a ten-day notice period, so we can't, we can't do that for the April sixth meeting, because we can't make that notice period, uh, but maybe at the, at the May, either if we do a workshop in late April, we could do it then, or at the May council meeting, we could hold a public hearing to formally ratify it, but I am asking you for your approval this afternoon.
Okay, do you need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion, yeah.
All right, I would make the motion to approve as presented.
Got a motion to approve by Councilman Turner, do I hear a second?
Are you gonna, Richard, are you gonna add the, what the stipulations were that Ryan included?
Um, yeah, I guess that would be as presented, but yeah, that would modify the motion then to approve as presented with the modifications, uh, Councilman Schrift proposed.
It's, as far as the criteria to put on the application, right.
Ryan, do you mind repeating those for the record, please?
Sure, um, that they would provide their most recent tax return, um, that we would do a credit check, uh, receive a letter of recommendation from their accountant and landlord, um, ask how long they've been in business, ask if they've ever defaulted on a loan, ask if they've ever filed for bankruptcy, provide the first page of a personal financial statement, um, and then also, in addition to it being a business loan, have a personal guarantee on it from themselves, and then, I had also mentioned the two and a half times thing, but I don't know if anybody wanted to do that or not.
Nah, well, I think, I'm not, I think that's gonna be prohibitive for some people to figure out, yeah.
Okay, yeah, so I can leave that one off, um, and then really, I mean, the, I think the committee has to do some good work as far as making sure that they could have paid this at the front end, but, I mean, I'm su, we can go ahead with this process, and I can always just offer that insight to the committee, and they can take that away.
Okay.
All right, so you, you've got the motion, and you've got Ryan's stipulations listed out, I guess we need a second.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
And just for clar, for clarification, Councilman Turner, did you also include, um, Councilman Heffron's suggestion that any payments that we receive go, would be designated to be put into the fund balance?
Yes, I would, I would like that incorporated.
And I'll second that again.
All right, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
My name, okay, we got Ryan, Mark, you in favor?
Yes, yep.
All right, Jim, you in favor?
Yes, yes.
All right, motion carries then.
Well done.
All right, thank you all very much.
And thank you, uh, Adrian, and, and thank you to Mark for, for bringing this up, I think it was a really good idea.
Absolutely.
To help our businesses.
Yeah.
All right, Adrian, I just, one quick note, and I talked to you and I talked to Parks about this, I mean, I'm all for helping our businesses, but, you know, I had floated the idea, is there anything that we can do through the BCO, maybe to help some of our citizens also that are in need, um, if Parks has the chance to look into that with the School of Government or wherever he might check on that, if we have any, any avenue to do anything.
Yeah, I think, um, I think, I, I think Adrian sent you the School of Government letter that said we're not able to appropriate funds, uh, even to a nonprofit in, in North Carolina, we don't have that authority, and we, uh, I responded on, uh, to your, um, question by reminding everybody that in the past, we've had to refuse a lot of requests, including Habitat for Humanities, themes at South Point and other youth programs that wanted to go on trips, the American Legion Baseball, all kind of nonprofits, we're not, we're not constitutionally authorized or statutorily authorized, uh, to make, uh, appropriate profits, so that would not be allowed. It's only allowed if you contract for normal governmental services with, with them, like we, like we've done with, uh, you know, somebody do, holding a festival or something that we would normally do.
All right, which would be the case, I guess, of elements of empowerment.
Correct.
Right.
All right, so, hey, I guess what I'm here, we, we have, we have no options along that, that line.
Correct.
Hey, just before we all hang up, I, since, since I have a business in downtown Belmont, I just wanna make it clear that I have no intention of applying for this loan whatsoever, and so I, I could have refused myself, I guess, but, um, I have no plans to request for a loan, and so, I, I don't, I wanted to come back that I'm creating government policies for my personal benefit, so.
Well, we, we value your.
We have business too, Ryan, but we're not requesting any either, so.
Okay, I just, I just don't want.
Ryan, we, we value your expertise more than we're worried about you securing a loan.
Okay, good, thank you.
We'll definitely put that in the record.
But I, I appreciate, I appreciate those that participated in this, and, uh, really wanna thank you very much for taking it to heart, the businesses that we have in town that are really struggling right now, that really have a hard time, so, uh, thank you all for doing that.
Uh, do we need to move to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll, I'll also move.
Got a motion to adjourn by Jim Heffron, got a second by Mr. Turner, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, meeting's adjourned, none opposed, I don't blame you.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone, stay safe.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, Adrian, for your hard work.
Wash your hands.
[laughing]